Mayor and Board of All the Persons of the City of Bastrop, all the way up to you stand. And as our tradition, let us start our meeting with prayer. And Ms. Olive, if you will lead us in prayer, Mr. Hamlin will lead us in the place of ladies and style flag.
Let us bow our heads. We thank you, Lord, that we live in a country that's free. We ask that you will protect our armed forces as they serve and represent our country. We ask that you will help us to continue surrendering our will, that it will reflect your will. These blessings and others, we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
We face the flag, salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. We welcome you to the meeting of the Mayor and Board of All the Persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana. We're glad that you joined us and we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to Madam Clerk, will you call the roll to determine if we have a quorum, please?
Sir, District A.
Present.
District C.
Present.
District C.
Present.
District D.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, ladies and gentlemen, good to see each of you as well. It's been a busy month. A hot month, for sure, hasn't it? I was glad to see rain the other night, and we could probably use a little bit more, I believe. Let me make a couple of announcements. Just to remind all of us and our citizens as well, we have a sales tax election coming up on July nineteenth. We'll be having at least a couple of meetings before that time. But these are not new sales taxes. These are sales taxes that have been in place for years, but because of the will of the people, these taxes are renewed periodically. Ms. Goldman, you want to give any information about the taxes? Any information you want to relay right now?
On the sales tax?
Yeah.
Well, it's two cents.
One cent each.
One cent each. One is up in 2009, the other one's up in 2010. So, renewing their ten years.
Okay. And our reason, you say, well, if they do in 2009, why we're having them now? Well, they do expire and start over in 2009, but we decided to consolidate them and put them on the same ballot to save money. Every cost that we have is increasing. We got a six percent increase in our group medical insurance. As you know, gas is going up constantly. And we felt that since we knew we had these sales taxes that were coming up relatively close together, we would put them on the same ballot. And an election cost us somewhere about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars each every time we have an election in the City of Bastrop, that's the cost of it. So, in an effort to save money, we're giving citizens natural opportunity to renew the taxes. Doesn't start it faster, but it's just saying, okay, we want to get this done, get it out of the way, and we're going to keep on going. We'll be giving more information. These are general sales taxes, which go toward operation, our operational costs. I know you get tired of hearing me say it, but the way that we support ourselves in the City of Bastrop, the way that you support your city government is through two sources. And we only have two basic revenue streams. Our money comes in from sales taxes. Whenever people buy something in the City of Bastrop, and we have three cent in sales tax. Of the ten cent in sales taxes that you pay in the City of Bastrop, three cent of that comes to the City of Bastrop. We get that money that comes into our coffers, and we also get money to support us from property tax. We don't have revenue generating utilities. Some cities have their own water system, some have their own gas system, some have their own electrical system or cable system, and they get money from that. But we don't, because the people here chose not to do that. The only money that we have to pay our police people and our fire folks and public works and pay our light bills and gas bills and street lights and dog catchers and grass cutters and pay for parks and recreation and gymnasiums and mosquito spring and everything that we do is through the taxes that you pay, either property or sales tax. Property tax brings us somewhere about three and a half million dollars. Sales tax brings us somewhere about four, five, or six. Our budget is about ten million dollars, ten, eleven million dollars, and that includes the grants that we get. So, sales taxes are important to us. The citizens have an opportunity to renew the sales taxes already in place. Again, this is not new. This is saying that we want to allow you to keep collecting the sales taxes. Well, if two of our three cent sales taxes are being renewed, if we don't pass that, that's going to be a significant part of our budget. And folks usually say that when you start talking about, well, if you don't pass the tax, we're going to cut services, you're threatening us. No, we're not threatening. We're talking about facts. It's like if you have two people working in your household, three people working in your household, and one or two of those folks lose their jobs. The impact of two people losing their job in a three-person income family is the same thing that would be almost if we don't renew these two sales taxes. It's just that simple. I wish that was another name that we could use to talk about taxes. I wish that we could call it something else. But the name that we call the money that we get in from the sale and from property is taxes. But that's the money, as I mentioned all these things a minute ago, to pay the salaries of the folks who work here to provide the services for us. And you know, we're an organization that our product is our service, you know, to cut the grass in cemeteries, in the park, on the side of the streets, to catch the dogs and do all those other kind of things, to pay the salary for those folks who do that, to buy the pickup trucks and the gas and the tractors. Everything that we get comes from those folks who live in the City of Bastrop, spend in the City of Bastrop or whatever. So, we need your support to give us the money to do the things for you, our citizens, that you need to have done. Honestly, we need more money. Our police department is at a low number compared to what is needed. We've had resignations and retirements and all that kind of thing. Our fire department is at a low level, because our pay scale is not as competitive as folks just next door. We had a skilled chief walker just the other day. We were talking about it and comparing the salary that we start our police officers with in the Sheriff's Department. Was a couple thousand dollars difference for starting person, almost? Was it a couple thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
About? Don't let me put words in there.
Yes, sir.
But there is a difference, and people will go over their next door and work because they pay more money than we do. And we've lost some of our best and most efficient and competent police officers to other agencies, because we don't pay as much. But it's the income that we have coming in. We need more money. We need more money. And that's not a complaint. We're happy with what we have. We need to keep what we have, and I promise you that we're going to continue to use the funds that we have to the best of our ability and stretch those dollars as far as they go. Ask those folks who driving those old beat-up trucks, right? But we do that. So, the sales tax election will be on July nineteenth, and we're going to be asking citizens to positively support and consider voting to allow us to continue as we are. Help me with the second item. Jacobs, Carter, Burgess Engineering Firm will hold a public hearing at the Municipal Center on June twenty-sixth from forty-seven regarding plans for the interstate to run from Monticello, Arkansas to Monroe. That's four twenty-five or sixty-nine?
He didn't tell me that. He just said it wasn't done by the interstate. So, I'm going to wait.
You know, we get so many stories about connectors between Interstate sixty-nine, which is going to come across Arkansas and go down into Shreveport. We get so many stories about highways that's going to link sixty-nine to Interstate twenty. We know that some significant things are happening on four twenty-five. That's construction up there. They're widening out, three-lane and four-lane, and buying more right away. There's also a discussion about a connector on interstate coming east of us, somewhere out between Ogre, Marouge, and Lake Providence, Old Grove, connecting sixty-nine down to twenty. There's also discussion about a corridor from one sixty-seven coming down through Ruston. So, there will be a public hearing regarding an interstate, evidently, this is a new scenario, that will run from Monticello, Arkansas to Monroe. Hopefully, it will come close to Bastrop, that we would love to have that traffic. That might help us with our bypass, wouldn't it?
Right.
The third announcement that I have-
Excuse me, mayor.
Yes, sir.
What is that meeting?
That meeting is going to be June twenty-sixth at the Municipal Center. June twenty-sixth is-
Kind of time, isn't it? Two Thursdays from now. Today is the twelfth.
The twenty-sixth is the fourth Thursday. And the time will be from four until seven at the Bastrop Municipal Center, talking about an interstate to run from Monticello, Arkansas to Monroe. So, we need to be in attendance and find out what they're talking about and have our input and participate in that. The third piece regards, and I mentioned this in Finance Committee meeting to you, regards to new ethics legislation that was passed last year, well, earlier this year in the special sessions called by Governor Jindo, and that applies to elected officials, statewide, regional, local, municipal. It also applies to folks who serve on public boards and commissions. We're doing an analysis now to see if there is a board or commission that the City of Bastrop controls, whether the historic district will be applicable, will be applied and covered by this ethics legislation, whether our Planning and Zoning Commission will be there. I don't think Civil Service does. We're not sure about other boards. But I know on the parish level, the nine-one-one commission, the Fire District Two Commission, and I don't know about Water Districts and all those folks out there, they will be covered by this. And this new ethics legislation requires that if you are on a board or commission, whether you're appointed, paid, volunteer or not, and that board has the capacity to spend or control ten thousand dollars or more, you are subject to the regulations of the Ethics Committee, of the Ethics Legislation. And the Ethics Legislation requires that people who serve must by, I think it's January ninth, submit a form reporting your sources of income, reporting how much money you made and how much money your spouse made and where the, how much you made and where your money comes from. Electoral officials are already covered by that. There are three tiers. There's Tier One, which is statewide officials, governor, legislator, or state-appointed officials and all that. Tier Two is elected officials that represent constituencies of five thousand or more, and because the City of Bastrop is thirteen thousand, I'm included in that, and I serve on a couple of the boards that also apply. I think you, as Board of All the Persons, might not be covered from your position as All the Persons, because your districts are only twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred folks. But if you happen to serve on another public board or commission, you might be. So, if you are on a board or commission, you will need to secure the required forms and submit those forms, giving your sources of income for you and your spouse for the year, which ends on June thirtieth, three weeks from now. The report that you file on January ninth will be for this fiscal year that's ending three weeks from now. That means if you are on a board and you don't want to be subject to this legislation, you must resign by twelve midnight, June thirtieth. If on July first you have not resigned, or July second you have not resigned, you will be required to fill out the appropriate paperwork. And if you don't fill it out, you will be subject to serious fines and/or penalties, including up to jail. That's not to scare folks off, but we got to figure out a way to get the message out, and the state legislature's not doing anything to get the message out to folks who serve on these boards. And by the fact that they don't know they might be serving on a board and don't know that they, if they don't want to report, they have to, you know, get off. But they have to get off before midnight, June thirtieth. So, if you know anybody on boards and commissions, tell them they need to use whatever resources they have to find out about this, and then they may need to make a decision from that The unique thing about this is when you start asking questions, what if this, and what about this, and how do I do this, nobody knows, because all of the procedural stuff is not established. I was in, at the LMA Board Meeting yesterday, and I was asking, and at the LMA Convention in Lafayette, there will be a session on it, but the LMA Board Meeting is the first week in August, which is after June, the deadline is June thirtieth. So, if somebody, you know, had not resigned by that time and they're still in office, they got to report. They got to report in January for this fiscal year that ends week after next, after next, whatever. So, that's for informational purposes, and just be aware, spread the word around, let people know, and we'll just see. I don't know if that includes Medco. We don't know. We don't know if Medco is included, Med is included. They're both government, state-recognized bodies. They're state-incorporated, they're state-chartered groups. So, if you're on a board... Got to do some investigation. Any other announcement that anybody else wants to make that I didn't make that's of I don't know if we've had a council meeting since the Clean and City Contest, have we? I don't think we have. We did not win the Clean and City Contest, but we did play second. And when I saw my friend, the mayor of Poundville, Clarence Fields, and his wife, he said, well, congratulations on y'all being second.
Yes, because they got first.
They were first, so that's why he was going through all of that. And, you know, we took it from them last year, so we're going to assume that it's flip-flop. You know, it's like home, like Lakers in Boston. They win at home, we win at home, so maybe next year will be our year. But we appreciate those folks who participated to make the Clean and City Contest be what it was, and thank you for our second place. We have the appropriate trophy as well.
Mayor, the airport, Benny, what was that plaque?
Mr. Lischfield's going to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Ms. Olive is going to do it. Y'all changed on me. Y'all surprised, y'all know what I feel about surprises now.
Okay.
She's going to do it. Okay.
Item number four on our agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. We had a meeting on May eighth.
I make a motion, ma'am, that we adopt the minutes from May eighth, two thousand eight.
Mr. Lenore makes a motion.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, and the ayes have it. Item number five is Finance Committee report. Mr. Hamlin.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt party number zero-eight, party one-sixty, building claim for May.
Mr. Hamlin has moved.
I'll make a motion, second his motion.
Mr. Gordon second Mr. Hamlin's motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, say no, and the ayes have it. Mr. Lischfield, would you come forth and give us a brief report on the Morehouse Memorial Airport?
Very brief.
Yes, sir.
Very. Okay. Security Gate Project is funded by the state, and I've got to talk to you, mayor, in the morning about a detail or two on that. And we're in negotiations for, the security cameras have been installed at the airport, and DOTD, more than likely, will pick up the DVR recorder and monitor costs, about four grand.
Fantastic.
So, that's a pretty good deal. Tomorrow afternoon, or lunchtime, I'm meeting with Mr. Ellington from Dim and Engineering for the survey of the clearways. Get that all locked down, so we can knock those trees down.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence has given us the green light on that. And Bastrop Wings had a luncheon to accept their new aircraft from the owners, and a couple of All the Persons were there. Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Olive were there, and pretty good food.
Good. I'm asking Ms. Olive to come down and join you as she talks about this plaque, as she
Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Hamlin and I attended a little program that Mr. Lischfield had at the airport, and I accepted a plaque from the Wings Project, and I would like to officially present that plaque to the city on behalf of the Wings. I want to compliment Mr. Lischfield on the tremendous job that he's doing out there.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The youth have done their homework, and I think they impressed Ms. Olive and Mr. Hamlin on their knowledge. And they're tearing into their new airplane. I couldn't pry him away last Saturday.
Okay. I want to compliment you on your weight loss.
Well, thank you. Twenty, twenty-five more to go.
Really?
Yep.
That's wonderful. That's good. Thank you both. Thank you for, Ms. Olive and Mr. Hamlin, for representing the city at that affair. And we thank the Bastrop Wings for this plaque of support. It will be displayed in our display area in our lobby. It's appointment time. Our charter requires that we have an official journal in which we publish our official minutes and announcements and publications and texts and all that. They tell us we have to do it, and hidden in there is we have to pay them as well. And that's one case where we pay by the word. But our official journal for the upcoming year will be the Bastrop Daily Enterprise of Bastrop, Louisiana. They have been the official journal for the City of Bastrop for many years, and we'll continue to do that. Would you legitimize my appointment by making a motion to accept that appointment, please?
Mayor Hawkins, I'll make a motion to appoint Bastrop Daily Enterprise as the official journal of Bastrop.
Okay. Mr. Gordon makes a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Olive seconds his motion. Is there any opposition? Being none, that appointment is approved. The auditor for the City of Bastrop has been Hill and Xena Company for many, many years. During the nineteen years I've been here, and they've done an outstanding job, and we appreciate them. And because they have represented us and helped us stay out of trouble and have been available as needed, I also recommend that we appoint them, renew the appointment of Hill and Xena, Inc. as our auditors, and a motion would be appropriate.
I make a motion that we renew the appointment of Hill and Xena back to the city.
Mr. Lenore makes that motion.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, and the ayes have it. Item number nine is Resolution Number zero-eight, twelve forty, a resolution making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of a revenue anticipation borrowing of not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, the issuance of Revenue Anticipation Note Series two thousand eight, and providing for other matters in connection herewith. Whenever we do this, I guess I have to relate to my time when I was in the classroom and I was teaching. In the school system, we got paid once a month, and got paid, you know, end of the month for the next month, or the first of the month for that month. And during that whole month, we had to make that money last. And often, as it got closer to the end of the month, we would run out of money. And depending on how severe our needs were, we would either have to borrow some from somewhere. If we had some in savings, we'd borrow it from there. If not, we'd just have to do without. Well, the City of Bastrop is unique, and that our budget year runs from July first to June thirtieth. And I mentioned to you earlier about our sources of revenue. We collect sales tax every day, every month, whatever, and our sales tax revenue comes to us twice a month from the sales tax collection. Or the sales tax that you pay goes to the commission, they divide it up, and they send us a check a couple times a month. But our big money comes in at the end of the year, and at the end of the year in December and early January, those folks who are a little bit late. So, we have to put that money aside or put it here, and we have to use it. But because our money comes in mainly in December, but our expenses are ongoing, sometimes we run out of money. We start getting low in money before our big money comes in in December again. We started doing this probably about eight to ten years ago, maybe? If I remember. Maybe not, maybe not that long. But making a loan to tide us through until our next paycheck, as it were, came in, and that's called a revenue anticipation loan. We're making a loan basing on the anticipated revenue that's going to come in the end of the year. And this is what I was talking about earlier, about our money and not having enough money. We know that the money's coming in, because people got property, they're going to pay the taxes. We know those folks are going to do business. But we know that the tax money is coming in, so we're able to borrow money on that. Because our increase in revenue is not keeping up with our increase in cost of operation, we're having to borrow money faster than we used to do. We got to make the loans, but we're having to do it faster and faster. Here it is. We're not out of this fiscal year yet, but we're getting permission to borrow money already. Business people appreciate what I'm talking about. Homemakers do too, you know. You start... I don't think I want to make this example, but this is almost the same thing as a payday loan.
Hmm.
Wes, don't print that, please. But it is anticipating the revenue that we're going to have. So, I shouldn't have said it, if I didn't want to print it, right?
Wes, don't print it.
His head went down there, didn't it? It went to that page.
Yeah, stop now.
But anyway, that's what this is about, ladies and gentlemen. That verbiage was just to remind you of what this is. This is something that we have been doing since you've been on the board, and we need to do this in order to be sure that we are able to operate continuously. We need to adopt this resolution, if it's your pleasure.
Make a motion for adoption.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion.
I'll second it, ma'am.
Mr. Lenore seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no, the ayes have it. Ideally, we want to work ourselves out of that, but until we can find ways to get more money in, if we can encourage people to stop spending money in Monroe and spend it here, if we had all the sales tax that's generated here, if it was staying in Bastrop, Morehouse Parish, we wouldn't have any problem in supporting ourselves. I do too. I go to Monroe sometimes and spend money, but I try not to. But we have to find, the task of this Board of All the Persons and citizens, we got to find a way to keep our money at home, so we can pay for the stuff that we need here, rather than help Monroe drive new cars, build new gyms, and do all the stuff that they do over there. I'm not hating on them, but that's just a fact. Item number ten, Ordinance Number zero-eight, forty-one sixty-nine, an ordinance to amend the provisions of the Enabling Ordinance for the Bastrop Historic District to provide regulations for sidewalk sign usage in the historical district. Mr. Lawrence, I need you to come forth. We had a public hearing at five forty-five this time. Mr. McKee, if you'll join him as well? We had a public hearing, and I need you to, if you'll come to the podium and talk about this legislation, and I'm under the impression that if you'll report on the public hearing as well, and the impact of this ordinance.
You want me to go first, mayor, or?
You, you have to decide.
I think it was on the last council meeting, there was an ordinance that was introduced regarding the regulation of the usage of what I would call freestanding signs on the sidewalks within the historic district, mainly by merchants in the historic district. That ordinance was based on a package of information that was sent to my office. It was already pre-configured, and I was simply asked to place it in a ordinance format. So, I'm not really able to speak in great detail on behalf of the historic district about their rationale for wanting to regulate what they're wanting to regulate, to the extent that we talk about the dimensions of the signs and the other particulars that are in the ordinance. But the ordinance before you tonight is the matter that was introduced at the last meeting, and I think Mr. McKee is going to give you a report about the results of a public hearing that was held on the ordinance before this. of a public hearing that was held on the ordinance before this meeting started tonight.
Okay, before Mr. McKee comes forth, is there a representative of the Bastrop Historic District here tonight? Is anyone here from the Bastrop Historic District? Okay, Mr. McKee?
We did have a hearing at approximately 5:30. We did have a citizen, a business owner, come to the hearing and have some questions about, with regard to the ordinance. That person's here tonight. He's still here at the meeting. The question was with regard to the size of the signs. And the sign, the wordage says that it shall be no wider than 24 inches and not taller than 42.
Above the sidewalk?
About, well, 65 inches above the sidewalk. But the width of the sign itself, with the wording on there, shouldn't be no taller than... The message show...
Right there. Right.
And that's a little over 1,000 square inches. There is a merchant that has a sign that doesn't exceed 1,000 square inches, but it does exceed the dimensions in one case.
It's wider or taller?
I believe it's wider.
It is slightly wider.
It's slightly wider, but not quite as tall as the dimensions are. And of course, I let Mr. Lawrence just say, I can't answer that question. I can just give you the dimensions and the square inches.
But if a document or an ordinance or a regulation has specificity in it, is there, are there provisions for variances?
This one has specificity in it, as you say. Because if it is wider than 24 inches, which I understand to be the issue, anything else would be a violation, and it would require a variance from this particular ordinance if this ordinance is enacted.
Does the ordinance provide for variances or challenges or exceptions?
I don't have the ordinance before me, but because it's operating as a zoning type of ordinance, the ultimate answer to that question would be yes.
To the zoning commission?
That's right. Now, once you do that, of course...
Pandora's box?
Yes. And it becomes an equal protection issue because...
If you accept one?
Others say, well, I have a right to an exception as well. So that's the concern about variances on an issue like this. And this one, this particular ordinance is very specific, the way that it's drawn, to indicate to me that it's contemplated that there would be strict adherence to this, for whatever reason.
Okay. I wish that none of the Historic District Commission members came to the public hearing. Mr. McKee?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to ask that we not take action on this tonight. And we have at least one call meeting before the end of this month that we ask the Historic District Commission representative to come and in an open forum, talk about the legislation. Mr. Ron Israel, I think you were the person protesting. Would you come up for just a minute, please? Thank you. Mr. Israel is owner of Seligman's Department Store in Bastrop. Were you a part, or was there a public meeting of the Historic District in talking about the signage and regulations or whatever?
Well, I'm certain there must have been some hearing or some meeting, but I was not invited to it. I was invited to one of the meetings that they had, I think it was last September, early October. I think it might have been the first meeting that they had concerning the Historic District after they got back together as a commission. And then after that, I never received notice of meetings. And so I wasn't aware of any meetings. And in fact, I wasn't aware about this proposed ordinance until about a week or so after your last meeting, when I had a customer in the store who said to me, oh, by the way, what did you hear, what did you think about that sidewalk sign ordinance? And I didn't know anything about it. And I think I, at that point, you know, came over here and discussed it with you.
Okay. Jessica, did you sit in on those meetings? Are they announced?
They're posted in the paper. Notice is posted in Historic District Review in the papers. Also posted on the North, South, and Lobby.
And the agenda is posted as well?
The agenda has been passed, just a notice, but no...
Okay, okay. All right, then. I just wanted to, my reason for asking the question was to try to figure out how they made the public aware that the meetings are to be held and those folks who are impacted by it.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me do this, because we're stretching this thing out. We've been going on this sign thing for three months now. But I'm going to ask the board, with your permission, to hold off on taking action on this until we can at least get some input from them. I know Mr. ... Who came? I forgot who came.
Larry James.
Larry James, yeah. Larry James came last time, and he came and brought a sample sign. But we need input from them. So let us hold off on this, and be aware, and we'll make an effort to inform you. And we also need to be sure that all members who will be impacted by this legislation are aware that there'll be a discussion on this, and we'll call it as soon as possible.
I would appreciate it. I know there are other merchants around the square who have these sidewalk signs, and they probably would like to have some, you know, some notification as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. McKee?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hamlin?
Did you talk about the fine that's printed in here? And you talked about the color of the sign?
The question is what now?
We're talking about, and this is what I'm looking at. They addressed the colors of the sign. And in particular, referred to fluorescent. And they also talked about the fine. You look at the fine, the penalty? Anybody look at the penalty? It's, I think it's pretty stiff. Might not be stiff for a business person, but from just looking at it, it could become excessive. You looked at that?
I'm not aware of the penalty. What is the...
Hey, you better read that thing.
You're not looking at the same one you were...
Do I have a proposed ordinance here?
Page five, section 12.
They don't have the same one.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay.
The, if I could just comment for one minute. I'm not sure about the proposed penalty. But just to let you know what I'm talking about, if you've driven through the downtown square, I'm going to pass these pictures around. These are pictures of the sign that I've kept in front of my store for years now. And it's a way for me to attract pedestrians, and it's also a way for me to attract the passing traffic motorists who go by. And I find it to be extremely effective in attracting customers. And, you know, the mayor was talking earlier about the importance of spending dollars here in the city and increasing our tax revenues. Well, actually, there are a lot of people who pass through downtown square, go right by my store on their way up to Arkansas or other places. And I frequently have them stop and say, oh, I didn't know you had, you know, tell me about these suits you have on sale. Tell me about these Levi's you have on sale. And so I think it actually is an important way to attract customers and ultimately to gain sales tax revenue for the city. The overall square footage or square inches of the ordinance, the way it's prepared now is, let's see, they have 1,008 square inches on their sign, and my sign is actually 957 square inches. So it's smaller in overall square inches. It's just a matter of configuration.
Okay. What we'll do is, that's my reason for wanting to talk to the Historic District Board to find out what their intent is in the signage. And the reason, you know, the public might not be aware, but they had banned signs totally one time, right?
Well, I believe certain kinds of signs have been banned, yes.
Signs have been banned. So this was an attempt to accommodate people who wanted to put signs out there. So this was their attempt, and they passed legislation. And evidently, they made their parameters without anybody in man. You had your sign already made, so they made, and the parameters that they have don't meet your sign's specifications. So, you know, do they make the sign parameters general or specific? And that's what I think we need to talk to them about, is how specific is it? Can it be smaller than? Do they want strict interpretation of it? Or, you know, because I'm sure a lot of folks have signs. And should the ordinance be structured to allow folks who have existing signs to continue using theirs if they're off a little bit? So we just need to have some dialogue there. So I think you'll agree that they're coming over to some extent. But what we need to do is find out how specific, based on the ordinance right now, Mr. Lawrence, their specificity, and there doesn't seem to be any variance in there. We need to see how much flex can be. Ms. Lawrence?
I don't want to crack this out, but there really needs to be some serious discussion about this because not only is it a question of dimension, also in looking at your sign, the appearance, the colors, I think that's what Mr. Hamlin was talking about, and even the pedestal that it's on. So what they are proposing is significantly different from what Mr. Israel is showing you today.
Sure. And, you know, you think about right here on the corner, just outside of our building, on the corner of Hickory and, what is this, Franklin? The United Methodist Church has a sign that uses a tire rim as the base. And depending on how the wind is blowing, if the wind blows extremely hard, that sign has been in the streets, it's been on the sidewalk, it's been all over the place. So...
Block should be you and everything.
Yeah. So we have issues with signage, period. So, and maybe we should have done this before now, but we need to have some discussion with the Historic District as to the interpretation and parameters and regulations. But thank you, Mr., and we'll be sure to let you know.
Can I ask one question, Mayor?
Ms. Robinson, yes.
When you bought your store, did you realize that it was in the historic district when you got it?
When I bought my store, it was not in historic district.
Historic district was not formed when he bought the store. The historic district was formed in the last five years, maybe?
Five or seven years. I've owned that store for 20 years.
Yeah.
Well, I was understanding that it had been, that the historic district had been formed a long time ago.
Historic district was formed after Main Street, but about the time that the Friends of Main Street started doing the high school project.
Right.
Because there was some tax credits that they wanted to get, and they created... There's some connection there. So historic district is a new animal on the block, new kid on the block. Okay, thank you very much. And I appreciate you, counsel, for allowing me to delay this discussion. Item number 11, Ordinance Number 084167. Jessica Staff, be sure that I'm reminded and we're reminded to convene the Historic District and also help them notify folks who are impacted by the action that we will take. Ordinance Number 084167, an ordinance of the mayor and board of all the persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to abandon a public right of way. Mr. Lawrence, this is a general thing. I don't know if you have anything specific you want to talk about it?
Well, I think the last time this came up, there was a discussion about whether or not any rights of ingress and egress would be blocked.
Mr. Israel, let me call you back up here. Just so happened that you're impacted by this as well. Mr. Israel, Ron Israel owns the property on West Madison, East Madison. And his boundary, the right of way that we're talking about is contiguous to the southern boundary of his, western boundary of his property. And I ask you to hold on that because we were not sure that if we eliminated this right of way, which, and rights of way are drawn into property, saying that this might be one day a street. And whoever planted out that property said this is a right of way, and this is reserved, that if a street is ever put in here, this will be a street leading from East Madison back into that property. Pizza Hut is on one side, Mr. Israel's property is on the other. That right of way has not been used, and we were concerned as to if we closed off that corridor going in there, whether anybody who owned property back in that area behind the shopping center would be prevented from getting there. I talked to Mr. Israel, and I was informed, and I think after Steph's poor plats, you own the property that's inside?
I own the property behind as well.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's my point.
So...
So you don't care?
I do not.
Okay, thank you then. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Boy. So the issue is, do we adopt this ordinance, abandon this right of way? And what will happen is, I think we found out that's a 40-foot right of way? Did we find out it was 40-foot?
20 feet here.
40-foot, 40-foot right of way. And what happens in cases like that, the Pizza Hut Corporation, calling them that, and Mr. Israel will split that 20-20. Mr. Israel will get 20 more feet of property in that right of way. The Pizza Hut Corporation will get the other 20 feet of the right of way to the length that we're talking about, and that adds to the dimension of their property. So if you're in favor of this, we need a motion.
I make a motion, and we so move on this.
Ms. Robinson makes the motion.
I'll second Ms. Robinson's motion.
Mr. Gordon seconds the motion. Is there any other discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item number 12, Permission to Advertise for Bids of Central Fire Station Roof Repair. Ladies and gentlemen, you can't imagine, but I guess that's why we were here. That's why we've been working on this for some period of time. Representative Charlie McDonald was able to get a $200,000 emergency fund grant for us to repair the fire station roof at Central. Central Fire Station's a flat roof. And for those of you who either lived in or been around flat roofs or been in flat roof buildings, you see leaks and all kinds of stuff. This building, this roof has been a nightmare for us for many, many years. And we've been, we've used every, I think, procedure known to man to try to fix the roof, but it just hasn't worked. It has a lot of issues. And we have the money, and we've been trying to figure out a way to fix the roof utilizing the money that we have. This was money which is from the state of Louisiana, which is dedicated specifically for this purpose. We're close. We have a contractor who has a process using a steel structure that will come in, and we don't have to do significant modifications to the building. And this structure with the support is bolted to the existing walls and deck and all that, and it will provide what we need. But we need your permission, even though we found somebody who does it. There might be somebody else. And state bid law says that we have to go out to bid. So we need your permission to advertise for bids for the central fire station roof repairs.
Mayor Hawkins?
Mr. Gordon?
I'll make a motion to send this out for advertising.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Oliver seconds his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed should say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll be about that. Mr. Richard Rigel from Club Diamond, 924 Luther Street, would like to speak to the board of all the persons. Is he here? Would you come up, please, and address the mayor and board of all the persons? And thank you for your presence. Mr. Rigel appeared before us, when was it, last month or month before?
Thank you for that. Month before.
Month before, and he purchased an occupational beer license, I mean, a liquor license, to sell alcohol beverages of high and low content consumption on premises. This address, 924 Luther, is the old, what were the names? Lady's Club? Lady Club, Caldwell's Place. Okay.
One of them, Three Feathers.
Three Feathers, yeah. This is located on Martin Luther King South, off of Martin Luther King South. Luther Street is a street, short street, but it intersects Martin Luther King South. Mr. Rigel?
Yeah, so my issue is trying to get back to 2:00.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm here trying to get back to 2:00, so it's 12:00.
Get back to 2:00?
Yes, the club, trying to let it stay open to 2:00.
Oh, okay, okay, closing.
Yeah, closing.
Okay.
At 2:00. Because the 12:00 issue is now... Because the twelve o'clock issue is now, it's hard to, it's like a hardship now because there's no one want to pay to come in, you know? They, they're gonna go to Monroe or right down the street, you know? We have the same bill, got to pay air condition, security, and it's, you know, we have to close at twelve, and trying to, you know, trying to maintain the club and pay everybody security and everything, and at twelve o'clock, we can't get a door, a door covered there, you know? Because they're gonna go to Monroe or other on down the street.
Okay. Discussion? Mr. Rigel is making a request.
All the other clubs open later than twelve?
Excuse me?
Not in the city, and yours is in the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we did that, we'd have to make it open for everybody else.
Mr. Rigel, just ask you one, maybe I have just basically one question at this point. Do you have an idea what headache it is to stay open to two o'clock?
Excuse me?
You have the slightest idea what headaches our officers have, just stay open to two o'clock?
Yes, yes, you know, I understand the position y'all in, you know? There's a lot of ice breakout or something, but, you know, it's kind of like a hard penalty just to do twelve o'clock, I mean. I mean, you took Sunday away, so what about Sunday? I mean, Sunday to twelve o'clock. You're trying to balance it out a little bit.
Mr. Rigel, when you bought your license, did you know that that was twelve o'clock closing time?
Yes.
But you bought your license doing that?
Right. I bought my license.
When you bought your license, we know we had Sunday closure?
Excuse me?
When you bought your license, you know the City of Bastrop had no, had blue laws, no Sunday sales?
Yes, yes, yeah.
But you bought your license anyway?
Right, I bought the license.
How long have you been open?
About two weeks.
Mr. Rigel?
Yes.
I understand what you're saying, and I wish this counsel that sometime could maybe talk about this, because if I'm not mistaken, I don't know about the twelve o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, everybody in Miles Parish is open on Sunday except Bastrop.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, I don't know for sure, but I don't want to talk about it here, but I think it's something worth looking into, addressing in the near future. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, okay. Okay, members of the Board of All the Persons, Mr. Rigel came before us to ask us to change the closing time of beverages that sell alcoholic beverages to two o'clock. Is there a motion to change the closing time and extend the closing, the hours of opening to two o'clock AM? Is there a consideration or a motion to that effect? Mr. Rigel, I think you have interest, but at this point, this board doesn't seem fit to do that.
Okay, well, thank you.
We appreciate you coming, sir. Thank you for your business as well. Liquor license, Mr. Walker?
Mayor, I don't have a liquor license, but I do have a request from Pinky's Quick Stop, Pinky Simpson. They have requested that the council, Mayor and Council approve them selling beer at the Kings Blues Festival at Dotson Park on July the fifth. The city does not issue a permit for that, but the state will issue a three-day permit if the city approves of it. But they have to have approval of the city before they will issue a three-day permit. And this is a festival, blues festival, that Ricky White has proposed having in the, in Dotson Park. I do not know if he has talked to this city in reference to this or not.
That's a one-day permit?
One day, yes, sir. The state issues a three-day permit, but this is only for one day, July the fifth.
I've been hearing the announcement on the radio about this affair. Mr. Tansy, have they rented the Dotson Park gym for that day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this is a blues festival? What are the hours, anybody know?
Oh. Mayor, let me, it's not in the letter. Ricky, when he came up with this letter, he told me, but I can't remember the exact hours, nine o'clock.
Now, Ricky back there?
Closing.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Would you come up, please? Thank you.
I didn't see you.
Good evening, Eric.
Good evening.
Oh, I think it's gonna start about two o'clock until, I talked to him a couple of days ago. He said he'd had it to ten, but I think he's extended it to twelve. But we was gonna try to get out there probably sometime in the middle of the day and go to the end of the concert. And we was gonna also be sure that, you know, it's to the, out to the public, sale beer to only to the out of the public, and monitor everything that goes on.
What day of the week is that?
This is Saturday. May the s- July fifth.
July fifth is on a Saturday.
And Mayor, Mr. White?
Yeah, Ricky White.
I think he's talked to Anthony about security and what have you, you know, for the.
Yeah, I spoke with him about it.
I would assume that being in Dotson Park would require security.
Mr. McKee, I need you to come over, please. And Chief Walker as well. How do we, if this board decides to, and I'm asking Mr. McKee because I think he's been involved in this, Chief Walker, you had before, how is Dotson Park secured in an event like this?
Willie has had a festival himself, so he's probably better acquainted than I am with it.
They lock all gates, block all entrances, turn Dotson Street into a one-way coming in and going around and come back out Pew Street, a one-way going out, that circles the park completely. There's only, there will only be two ways in. You can drive in from Samuel, there'll be security there, there'll be security at the front gate, and there'll be security, patrol and a fence in the park to secure everything.
Now, does rental include use of the gym, gymnasium?
Actually, unless it's been changed, the gym is a separate room from the park.
Mr. Tansy?
Yes, sir. They only have the.
Mr. Allen Tansy is Director of Parks Recreation.
There's only access to the park. That does not include the gymnasium.
Okay, so gym functions will be suspended on that day?
That's, that, yes, it will be. It will have to be, yeah.
It will be, okay. Mr. Walker, I think you talked about security?
Yes, sir. They normally use ten or twelve officers out there.
Okay.
Depending on what kind of crowd they anticipate, and normally it's pretty good, you know?
Okay, now, it is, I'm not pro or con, I'm not taking a position either way. And Mr. Walker, I think you made it clear, the state is gonna punt on this. If we grant the license, if we grant permission, the state will grant the license?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No permission, no permit.
Now, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker, you've been historically responsible for alcoholic beverages permits. Do we have a problem with the church being there?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, we've been doing it forever.
Well.
Which church, which church, anyway?
Well, the difference here is Juneteenth and other activities where people have brought their own alcoholic beverages, we have not sold that before. Let me help you with the answer to this. I think you measure from the entrance going around. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to do that because we're gonna get these questions. It's my job to ask the hard questions, right?
It's the hardest.
Is that true?
Yes.
So, we do not have a violation then because the entrance to the church is more than three hundred feet from the entrance to the park, either the walking gate or the driving gate going into the fair. The record needs to show that now, because I don't, I don't want anybody to come up and jump and say y'all didn't, y'all allowed the sale of alcoholic beverages to be within three hundred feet of a church. Does that make sense? You gonna have porta-johns?
Yes, sir.
Because the gym's gonna be closed. Are we gonna specify the number? We need to know how many, how many, how many people will be there, and the number porta-johns should coincide with the number of folks who are gonna be there, right?
Well, I got Mr. White, and Mr. White said he was gonna have porta-johns out there, so I'm gonna get with him to make sure we have enough out there.
Okay, and it's gonna be up to us, Mr. Lawrence, it's gonna be up to us to ensure that these things are done, right?
Yes, sir.
You had comments on this? Come on up, please, sir.
No, sir, I was listening to Daddy the other way.
Ready for me to call you, right?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something?
Please, sir.
Maybe the council strongly suggested he rents the gym.
Okay. And why?
He's gonna need it.
Because dressing and all that?
Because performers, being performers have to change, and they won't change anyplace else.
Okay.
And they'll need a place where there's air in case someone does have heat scrub problem, so when the ambulance get called, medical personnel get called, we'll have some place to keep it cool.
Okay, so if this Board of All the Persons decides to rent the gym, I mean, Dotson Park for this purpose, it should include the requirement that they also rent the gymnasium? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I talked to Mr. White about that situation. Now, I don't know whether this is true or not, but Mr. White told me that it was something else going on in the gym somewhere later on that night or something, I don't know now. He could be, he said, because I asked him, did he have the gym?
That's the man with the schedule right there.
No, no, well, see, I didn't know. But see, I will tell him about that tonight and let him know we should, you can see it for purposes of balance.
Well, if the board approves it, we'll have to.
Mayor?
Ms. Robinson?
The last blues festival they had out there, was there any trouble? Well.
Not that I'm aware of.
My husband and I and his, and the other couple attended, and I didn't see any. So, I was kind of looking forward to it.
Okay, the difference, excuse me, but the difference in this festival, in the Juneteens and the other festivals that have been held before is there has not, in my memory, there has not been an occasion, help me, have we sold beer before out there?
No, sir, not legally.
No, we have not sold beer.
This will be, this will be the first.
And Ms. Robinson, that's why this debate, this discussion is going on, because we have not had an affair out there, Mr. Burrell, Captain Burrell's in the back, we have not had an affair out there where we sold, where we allowed beer to be sold.
Well, I didn't remember that part, so.
That's, that's.
Right.
They have allowed it to be consumed without selling.
Right, they bring it out there, but we just trying to do something a little different to make the festival more lively.
Okay, we understand. Don't get yourself in trouble now, don't, don't.
Okay, I'm down.
Okay, okay. Do you have any questions, Board of All the Persons?
The officers, ten to twelve, did I hear someone say?
It's gonna be based on the number of people.
Okay.
It's gonna be based on the number of people that they say they're gonna let in. And what we do, Ms. Olive and other, all the persons, whether it's with the gymnasium, and especially if there's gonna be alcoholic beverage or dance or whatever, and we probably do something similar. We have to control the number of people because the number of people, there has to be a ratio of people to officers, and we, by some means, would count the number of folks who in there, and if it exceeds our designated number of folks based on the number of officers we have, we'll have to shut it down. When I say shut it down, shut down people going in there.
Right.
Because we have to be able to maintain, am I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when we have things in our gymnasium, if there's a dance, we sell wristbands.
Well, I think that's what you're trying to do. That's, that'd be the wise thing.
And that would be the count, that would be the way that we would keep up with how many folks are in there, and, you know, and I'm saying shut it down, we need to do that if we call out other officers, because we've done that as well. So, this, there is a process here, and because we have such responsibility and liability exposure, we try to make it right. That's why I want to be sure that we all understand what's going on, and I want to cover all the bases because there are little intricacies and requirements of law that we can't afford to make exceptions on this. Okay? Now, what is your pleasure, members of the Board of All the Persons?
I make a motion.
And who makes the motion to approve this?
I'll second.
Ms. Olive seconds the motion. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, may I ask a question? Does this approval depend on whether they rent the gym or not? I mean, they have got to rent the gym.
The requirement is that they?
Because I will have to write a letter to the state for them, you know, explaining that y'all gave permission for him to get the three-day permit.
Three day or one day?
Where they give three days.
It's a three-day permit.
But y'all can't cover one day now?
They can't help one day.
Just one day is all.
I want one day, Mayor.
I just need to know before I write the letter.
Okay, yes, sir.
I have one other.
The letter will be giving them authorization to buy a permit, and we know that the sale will only be for one day, but the City of Bastrop approved them buying this license. And in all of the requirements, ratio of officers to number of people, the rental of the gymnasium at the appropriate rate, those parameters would also be a part of the conditions of rental. If he decides not to rent the gym, then the deal's on.
Yes, sir.
That's a deal breaker.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Olive?
And we're closing at what?
Twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock.
By twelve o'clock.
By twelve o'clock.
Okay, Ms. Olive?
The availability of officers.
You said that?
This will be off-duty officers that, you know, that take this, that everything we break, scrape.
Off-duty officers of the City of Bastrop?
Yes, sir, paid by, by them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, just say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Simpson.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you, boy.
Ms. Kay King, we do not have a MECO report tonight because Ms. Kay King is on an economic development mission. She's in South Louisiana visiting with representatives of SMI on an expansion project. And I should have said this in the announcements, but, and I don't know if the enterprise covered this or not, but on Tuesday night of this week, I attended an award ceremony conducted by Louisiana Economic Development, recognizing eight businesses, at least eight businesses in the state for outstanding leadership and progress. An international paper company was one of the businesses recognized and to receive the Lantern Award. There are eight economic development districts in the state of Louisiana, and each district nominated somebody from their district to receive it, and IP received it because of their participation in the economic world here in Bastrop, and there were representatives from MECO, representatives from the Economic Development District, national representatives from IP who were in attendance, and it was a glorious occasion. So, we congratulate the National Paper for receiving that commendation. I need a motion to expand the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to expand.
Mayor?
Before you do, I'm sorry, Ms. Hamlin?
Did you cover number fifteen?
Did I?
Any other business probably brought before the Mayor and Board of All the Persons?
Okay, let me say that first then. They put it after the expansion, but is there any other business to be brought before the Mayor and Board of All the Persons?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the election for July?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yes, sir.
That's right around the corner. We, I don't know if we'll be together again or not. In the past, sometime we have gone together and purchased an ad as a mayor and council asking people to support the renewal of the tax. Is it necessary that we do that this year?
I think it is appropriate, and just to explain what Mr. Hamlin just said, the City of Bastrop will have a series of ads running in the paper announcing and informing the citizens about the election coming up and about the sales tax. announcing and informing the citizens about the election coming up and about the sales tax. But the city of Barstrop cannot pay for an ad advocating to vote yes or to vote no, establishing a position. We can't use public money to do that because it's taking a position. So, the city of Barstrop will run informational ads relating to the election coming up. Mr. Hamlin's question was, and statement is, in the past, because the city of Barstrop can't do it, members of the Board of All the Persons have contributed to ad space, promotional ads, vote yes ads in the newspaper. And he's asking us, do we want to do that again? I guess the question is, are you in favor of renewing the taxes?
Oh, yeah.
Men fifty to five, huh? Don't cry around here.
So, the next thing is, do you want to put your money where you? Okay. Are we in favor?
In favor.
Mr. Hamlin, I think the answer is yes. I heard no no's.
Yeah, I was there, I heard mumbling Willie.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Sandra, I can't remember, what did we pay less? Was it about? Less than nine dollars? How many did we run? Okay. Since it's two elections, we might need to pay eighteen. Need bigger ads to be sure that people see them and all that. Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hamlin, for doing that. Let me, before, before we expand the agenda, Mr. Matthews, I see you present, come on up, I need you to. I asked you to come back to this meeting, uh, this month because we had a project that we were doing in your area, and, uh, I think that we, something has been done, so we'd like to hear from you.
And this man, all of the persons, they came over there and weed-eated. That was it. Center block where the house was sitting, the woods and stuff, excuse me. And the other day, I went out there and I found a, where the snake had sk- uh, shedded its skin.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the full lot on the other side of me over there, the guy, he came over there. He weed, parted the lot. You got bottles, beer cans, and some everything. And the lot across the street, they hadn't did anything.
Okay.
And, you know, it, 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 it's really just a mess. It is. You know, like I say, I invested too much money. I've been there all my life, and I have invested too much money in my home that's to be destroyed by all that junk around there. And another problem we got, well, you want to hear it now, right across the street from me, them kids, they come over there, it's seven, eight cars over there at one time. And I don't never see police department over there, and you know what they're doing when you got that many people hanging around. It's not the one thing going on, drugs. And now they haven't got to the place where they do, they take a table and sit out in the middle of the street. It's a dead-end street. You know, it's just ridiculous, you know? And I'm not too old to be moving.
They put a, they put a table in the middle of the street and just gather up out there?
They put a table out there, sit around, drank beer, and shoot the breeze, whatever they want to do. I put it like that.
This is day and night?
This is day and night. I left home a few minutes ago. It was twelve, fourteen over that end.
Okay. All right. First, let me apologize for us not doing the job thoroughly, and, and let me, let me work on this again. But they came, but they didn't do a thorough job.
Nope.
Now, well, that, that two properties, right?
It's three.
Well, the two beside you, though.
Right. One on this side and one on the side of the lot that I bought.
So, the city came out and did one?
No, fit, it ain't did nothing.
Okay. I was under the impression that, that the, is Mr. McKee still in here? I need it, please.
No.
I was under the impression that the city came over.
And Lee came and weed-eated the one right next door to me.
Okay.
But they didn't move the concrete block where the house was sitting at and all that wood and stuff. They didn't move it, he didn't move it. He said all he was told to do was weed-eating. Okay, the other house, the one Judith Sawyer owned, her son-in-law came over and he weed-eated half of the lot, but he left bottles, cans, and everything else there. And the one across the street which, um, this mason owned, they hadn't did anything, it.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Okay. Let, let me, let me, before we do this.
Okay.
Ms., Mr. McKee, Mr. Matthews, I was under the impression that the city had, our crew came over and cleaned up one of the lots. Mr. Matthews is saying that it was done by private individuals.
Well, I, I'm not sure whether our crew did it or whether a private individual did it. But I, it's not your, it's not your contention that lots aren't clean, it just wasn't cleaned good enough. Is that right?
The lot, they were half-cleaned, they not good enough because, you know, you wouldn't want all them boards and snakes and rats and everything around your property.
Okay. So, it's still habit- inhabiting?
Right.
Okay, all right. And, 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 okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Ms. Robinson.
Mr. Matthews, at the end of your street where that, that blocks it off, there was a, isn't there a big pile of trash there that's been there for a very long time?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, on the street behind Mr. Matthews, and I think it's Hollands, there I called, uh, Ms. Martin about one house at the end of that street, Limerick, where it's blocked off. There's every, I don't know how many tires are in that backyard waiting, that's what, mosquitoes and whatever else whenever it rains. And that whole street needs to have something done to it. But there is a big, huge pile of trash at the end of Limerick that should be removed also.
Okay.
And also over on Martin Luther King, right behind my property, the office on it. But, uh, they got creaves and everything else, and that ditch that runs right behind it, the main drainage ditch. It got tires, refrigerators, and everything up there.
Okay. All right. Let us try again, Mr. Matthews.
Okay.
Mister, I wish you'd get with Mr. Walker. Would you, let's make note of what he's talking about, about the, uh, the activity over there. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We appreciate your patience.
Mayor Hawkins.
Mr. Hamlin.
Uh, when he came by last time and showed those pictures, I was impressed about his flower bed, so I, I drove over there. And I can understand his, his position. And what his perception of cleaning up is a lot different from Dale's, and, and that's a problem.
Okay.
You can eat off of his grass.
It's, it sounds like.
His perception of cleaning up is a lot different from their perception of cleaning up.
But it, it sounds like there's some debris on the lot that, that, that still violates, violates refuse and accumulation. He was talking about piles of woods and other stuff like that that needs to be attended. And that's one of those things we have to hit, hit, hit a happy medium on. But I, I appreciate it, and help us monitor and, and give us, both if you give us assistance in doing that. Okay. Now, uh, I'd like a motion to expand the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion.
Jointly made by Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Gordon. Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds their motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's have it. Uh, item number one on the expanded agenda is permission, Mr. Lawrence, if you'll come up. This is, uh, Mr. Lishfield, you're involved in this?
Yeah, he started it.
Okay, he started it.
Yeah, he did.
Come on up with Mr. Lawrence. Permission to obtain an Attorney General's opinion regarding the seizure and sale of abandoned or unclaimed aircraft. The reason for this request is?
The reason why we need it is, there's a state statute on the books that talks about the procedure for seizing and disposing of, uh, abandoned or unclaimed aircraft and big parts. Or at least, we believe it describes what the procedure is. And, and there seems to be a difference of opinion with some state agencies that we've interacted with about who's responsible and who should do what. And I think a part of the response that Mr. Lishfield got was that the state would sort of defer to us to, to create our own ordinance to provide for, uh, seizing and selling and disposing of aircraft. But that it seemed, that seems to be directly the opposite of, of what the state statute says. So, I just want to be sure about it. I want to know what can we do? And I'm asking for, uh, permission to seek an Attorney General's opinion on the entire matter.
Very good. Okay. Does the board need to make a motion given the permission of us to do this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for this permission.
Mr. Gordon makes the motion.
I second.
Tri- triplely seconded by Ms. Robinson, Mr. Noah, and Mr. Hamlin. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to say no. Thank you very much. Item number two is permission to accept ownership and attendant care and maintenance obligations of the new animal shelter facility once it is completed.
Mrs. Peppers.
Okay, Mr. Mr. McKee, would you join Mr. Lawrence up here, please?
Mrs. Peppers came and saw me, uh, was it one day this week?
Yes, uh, Wednesday, I believe.
And, uh, she discussed briefly the project that the Humane Society has for the building of a new, proposed building of a new facility out near the dump site that's owned or operated by the city, uh, the property owned by the city.
Owned, owned.
Owned by the city of Barstrop.
Take operated out, scratch that.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and she also had some paperwork from the state fire marshal and some other agencies. And the issue was, will the city of Barstrop agree to accept ownership of the facility once it is built, which carries with that, of course, the, the maintenance obligations that comes, comes with ownership? Now, Mrs. Peppers also indicated to me that there was funding, uh, some funding that had been received. Also, she had a plat along with at least a concept drawing of the facility. And she showed that to me and talked about parking and pavement as well. So, it's a question of will the, will the city authorize me or you, Mayor, or someone to issue a letter to the state fire marshal, among others, saying that we will accept ownership of the facility once it is completed?
Okay. Ms. Pepper, thank you. Would you introduce yourself? Your first name is?
Pat Peppers.
Ms. Pat Peppers, and, and your position is?
I'm Vice President of the Humane Society here in Morehouse Parish.
Okay. And, and the Humane Society received a grant from the state?
Yes, we, uh, this was a, I believe it's a national grant, Maddie's Fund is what it's called, and.
It's simple, a bit close to the microphone, please, ma'am.
Yes. It's, uh, called Maddie's Fund, and we received a grant, well, a fund money for twelve thousand five hundred. We're taking that along with, uh, contributions, uh, methods of earning money towards the building of a cat shelter out at the Humane Society building out there, the, the land we have out there. And I'm going through the necessary procedures, and the next step is to get a building permit from the state. And one of the requirements is a paper stating that y'all will take custody of the building once it's completed.
Okay. Now, the twelve thousand dollars will be used strictly for the billing of the building?
Yes.
Okay. And this, and, and the city or other entities, then you mentioned sidewalks, driveways, or whatever. Who's, who's gonna put in all the supporting?
Mrs. Peppers had a plat that showed the layout of the drive.
I have it with me if y'all would care to see it.
Okay, just information, just.
Okay. Uh, what it is, is we had Mr. Messenger go out there. We have a problem with drainage, and he did a survey for us and drew up a plat showing how we can handle our drainage problem there. And also, it shows the existence of the buildings that are there as well as potential site for our new building.
Okay. But sidewalks, driveways, and?
The, we're, that particular plat deals strictly with what is already there.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, we're also gonna have the, uh, plans drawn up for the cat shelter. We understand we'll need the necessary parking for handicap and also easy access, handicap access to the building itself once it's completed. And so, that will be shown in our, uh, architect drawings, and we have Larry James who's doing that for us right now.
Okay. I, I'm assuming that that will need, is there parking lot, driveway space, concrete already there where the building would be or will it need to be added?
Right now, all we have is a gravel parking area.
And where I'm going with this, I'm, I'm, but I'm trying to figure out if the city of Barstrop would be expected to provide any other accessories?
Right now, uh, the way it's going, the way it's being handled is, uh, Mr. McKee is being generous in offering the equipment and personnel to do some grading work there for us to help set up our drainage. We will make arrangements to have someone that we will hire to handle any of the concrete necessary to handle the drainage. So, um, you know, he's talked about helping us do the site work for the foundation. But basically, we are in the process of getting estimates from various people for the construction of the building itself.
So, this building will have plumbing?
Yes.
Gas?
Yes. We, uh, also, I'm trying to, uh, meet with the lady from the health department to discuss the sewage and, uh, any suggestions she has. There is a septic pond out there. I don't feel like that we'll be able to tap into it. But those are things that we've yet to hash out. Mainly, I'm getting to a point where we can consider, you know, the beginning of the construction, and this is one of the steps.
Historically, in the city of Barstrop right now, and we appreciate the Humane Society for the role that they play in, 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 in animal, animal sheltering and feeding and all of that because they provide extensive labor and expertise that the city of Barstrop just doesn't, does not have. They basically run the animal control, animal shelter part. We do the animal control. We take animals out there, but they do the spaying and neutering and upkeep and maintenance and feeding them and, and all, all of that. So, we really appreciate it. The city of Barstrop maintains, and I'm pretty sure that there's some volunteer stuff that happens from the Humane Society, but we do the maintenance. We pay, I think we pay electrical bills and all that out there. We pay utilities. We dug the pond, the, the treatment facility that's out there. That was an old pond that wasn't adequate. So, we use our city crews and dug that pond and have been, we do plumbing, electrical stuff, and we do maintenance, put in units and do all spraying and that kind of thing. So, this isn't something that we haven't been doing. But, and most of the buildings, I think, that are out there already have been built either by the Humane Society, city of Barstrop, or local labor.
Yes.
This is one of the first times that an outside sources, I can appreciate it, has built a building. And because we're going through the state fire marshal, they have to have assurances that we will accept and do whatever we're supposed to do. And what I wanted to be sure of, that the Board of All the Persons is aware that this building, is it gonna be a still building or what?
Yes.
Still building. This building will be built by funds that have been acquired externally from the city of Barstrop. But our building inspection department would do, be doing the inspect, well, that's outside the limits, isn't it? Ms. McKee?
They will be inspecting.
They will be inspecting as well?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Pepper?
What size is it? I mean, it, how many additional cats are you gonna be putting?
You did say for cats, right?
Yes, this is a, a facility for cats. Right now, we have forty-eight cats. And, uh, the way this building will be set up, we will have an isolation room so aside for the cats that first come in there to verify they're healthy. And then we will have separate rooms for male and female, and they will be allowed to be loose in the rooms. And, um, I would say we could probably handle fifty to sixty cats in that way.
What, what increase cost would that be to the city on a regular basis?
Uh, the increase would be, if I understand correctly, it'd probably be the utilities that would run this building. We will have central air and heat. We'll have basic plumbing, washer dryer, that kind of thing. And we'll have a room for bathing the animals, but, um.
Central air and heat for the cats?
For the building.
Yeah.
We will have an office space as well.
What, is the cats only?
Cats only.
You asked what size, did you ask the what size?
Right now, our cats are housed in a small, little two-room area in the inside of the cinder block building where we have multiple dogs.
What?
And so.
When the dogs are sufficient now?
Well, we, we have plenty of dogs.
Yeah, most be removed cat.
What, what size is the building again, Ms. Pepper?
Uh, I believe, well, the basic dimensions will be a thirty by forty feet building.
Thirty by forty, okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Board members, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motions. They're second.
I'll second.
Jointly seconded by Mr. Gordon and Ms. Robinson. Jointly seconded by Mister Gordon and Miss Robinson. The motion is to accept, permission to accept ownership and attendant care and maintenance obligations of the new animal shelter facility once it is completed. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
And to authorize a letter to go to the Fire Marshal right now, is that effective?
Okay. And authorize the necessary communications. Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, just say no. Ayes have it. Thank you very much, Miss Pepper. Is there any, is there a citizen who'd like to make a comment to this mayor and board of all the persons?
Mayor Hawkins, one of my constituents is here, Mister Reggie DeFries.
Okay.
And I think he has a concern that merits our consideration.
Okay. Mister Reggie DeFries is director of the council, Morehouse Council on Aging. Are you coming in that role, or are you coming as a citizen?
Yes, sir, in that role, if that's acceptable to the alderman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I know you've had a long day. I appreciate the little amount of time that you've given to me. First of all, I'd like to thank the city, the mayor, and Public Works for the work they did at the tack house last year to improve the sewer line. It has really been a tremendous help to all of the people who go into the old tack house. Last year, we were here with Mister Jackson, our contractor, about the permit for the apartments, Morehouse Senior Apartments, if you remember correctly. We were building 13 units over on Nell Drive. When the original paperwork went to HUD, the estimate that was given to Mister Jackson was around $2,500 for a permit. But the permit went to $5,500 when we actually went to construction. We were in the process this last month of asking for permit information again on the handicapped apartments, which are going across the street from the Morehouse Senior Apartments, which there were 14 units that are going to be built. And the estimate that was given to us was $7,000. So I asked Mister Jackson at that time to do kind of a survey for us of Washatah Parish, the city of Monroe, Morehouse Parish, city of Bastrop, Richland Parish, to give us some kind of an idea of what the permits were costing. They were ranging anywhere from $1,600 to the highest at $7,000. I have a copy of that, if you'd like to see any of that data. So I wrote to the mayor back in May, asking for some help in terms of that permit cost. I know we've had a couple, a year and a half or so to look at the new codes that we're having to follow in construction that I don't know of any other project, some of you might, that might be of the same scope that we've charged $7,000 for. This will be $1.3 million. Only disabled people and physically handicapped people can live in this apartment complex. So we were kind of asking for whatever help you could give us in terms of that price. We're having to do some additional dirt work that we hadn't really counted on when we were looking at this property. It seems that the property right across the street from where the senior apartments are seems to have a valley that runs down through the middle of it. And the dirt is not very good dirt for construction purposes. So they're going to have to bring in, instead of, just to give you a figure, $28,000 that it costs for the dirt work with the Morehouse Senior Apartments, it's going to cost $45,000 for the dirt work right across the street. So the costs, of course, have gone up. Some costs have decreased in building supply products, but most of the costs have increased. And we didn't know what you might, could do, so we were trying to bring it to your attention. The quote that was given to us, I believe was given by Mister Jester, who I think gives those estimates to people who are considering building. So, again, we're going to what's called firm commitment with HUD. If you're familiar with that process, the contractor has to get all of his subcontractor prices together on what he's going to build. And of course, permits are included within those estimates. And when he told me what the estimate was, that's when I basically wrote the letter and provided his information.
Mister Montgomery, would you come up here, please?
Sir.
Help me, Mister McKee has been involved in this as well. Help me, help me with the new international building code and its, and the regulations which control that. This international building code imposition has been a nightmare statewide. And I don't, this is not out of disrespect, but the stress that it has caused is, you couldn't, you can't imagine. And please don't mistake me when I say this, with my intentions. I honestly believe this, Kurt McCarthy, who is the chief billing official who's in charge of enforcing the international building code, died just this past week. And I can't help but believe that his death probably was related to all the stress that he's been involved in and implementing this and sorting this thing out. So this has been a horrendous nightmare for all of us. I was talking to some of the mayor counterparts in meetings that I was in last week and this week. I just left the Municipal Association meeting yesterday. And more and more people are contracting their services out because of different difficulties that they're having.
That's true.
Contracting the departmental services out as far as the issuing of permits and all of that because it's horrendous. There's a series of tests that have to be passed in order to certify folks. And like another project I'm involved in, Mister Hamlin, it's a moving target. And you know what I'm talking about. It's a moving target, taking that test.
That's true.
So my question to you is Mister DeFries just mentioned the variety of permit costs that exist in places that he surveyed. Does the state set the charges for the permits, or is it something that's flexible, or how does that work?
Well, we, in our department, we have agreed that we would charge a certain amount per square foot, for a square foot. So, and we arrived at this figure by, you know, because people come in to buy permits and they say, well, it's going to cost me such and such to build it. And, but what we do is we have a certain figure that if you're going to build a square foot, this is it.
My question though, my question though, are the permit costs mandated by the state? So does the local have the authority to establish that?
We have, we have some leeway in that, yes.
Alright. In the permits department, are nonprofits or various categories of organizations or public bodies allowed different rates, or is that fixed?
Well, like I said, we have some leeway. The city has to, we set our rates on what we charge per square foot. And, you know, we ran into this problem, like you said, it's been a big problem because getting the people qualified and everything we have to do as far as going through schooling. But now, we do have some leeway in the rates that we can charge per square foot.
Okay, alright. Mister DeFries, let us, let me arrange, let me convene a meeting with you and billing permits department and let, with the council's permission, let me investigate this and report back to you.
May I ask a question?
Miss Robinson?
Are you, do you have a time limit on this?
Yes, ma'am. He's already had to submit his information to HUD. But you have some leeway until you go to firm commitment where you actually pay people for property. I'm sorry. You do have some leeway in terms of time when you go to pay people for the property, when you actually let the contract with the contractor and the subcontractors. So we're hoping that that's sometime in July. This would give us a little time to work on.
Well, as far as, if you're asking for our opinion, mayor, I'd like to be able to, because of what it is and who it's for, I would like to do whatever we could to be able to help go through with this because we don't have adequate housing for elderly to start with.
Okay. Alright, then, just surely, Miss Robinson, thank you. Mister DeFries, if you will notify you very soon when we get together.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your time.
May I ask Mister DeFries a question?
Mister Hamlin?
Yes, sir.
What about the 50 fitness program? Did we, in the paperwork, you had a 50 fitness program over there?
No, sir, that's with the park, I believe.
I'm sorry. Alright.
I think it's with the park, it wasn't.
Oh, the park. I get with it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for what you do, sir. Alright. Is any other business to be brought before this mayor and board of all the persons?
Mayor Hawkins.
Miss Oliver.
Uh, let me ask that the city, we as a government body, supply some information. I received a call in reference to the street tax and the streets that have been overlaid and the ones that's coming up. And I think we need to give the public some information, some updates on where we are and the whys in reference to that call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, staff, would you make a note of that for us, as far as our to-do list? We're trying to improve our responsiveness. And I've asked staff to help me with the action list, a list of action items that you direct us and that you mentioned in council meetings so that we can be more systematic in reporting back to you. We have some visitors. Any of, do any of you have comments, anybody else from the audience? We have several situations that we're dealing with. Mister McKee, help me with something. Give me an update on the, on the street overlay, the state's street overlay program, please?
Say?
Yes, sir.
Presently, they're working on-
Harrington Van?
I was going to try to think of the actual number of the highway.
Highway number?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty dash one, I believe.
Okay.
But it's Harrington and Van Avenue. They've nailed the street, took up 271 yards of meal, chopped up asphalt. And they should start their overlay, if not tomorrow, first thing Monday. And they'll overlay from 425, which will be North Washington, all the way to Pleasant Drive.
Benefit, our benefit. We're getting what from it? Aren't they giving us?
They're giving us all of the asphalt that they're taking up.
What they do is they get the coal planing machines to go by and grind up all the stuff. And we're taking that and putting it down in our yard on Jackson Street. And one of the projects, we bought a new road grader because the shoulders of our streets are causing us negative impact on our streets because the water is not getting to the ditch and it's causing trenches to go down the street. So shoulder work is important to us. We're doing some cross-training so that we can have more equipment operators. And we're going to be using this coal plan, that material on the shoulders of the road for us to give a more substantial shoulder and also to help direct the water from the street to the ditches where it should be and keep from eroding and trenching out the sides of the street. So we're getting that coal plan material. They're saving money because they don't have to haul it all the way off somewhere else.
Yes, sir.
And we need that kind of material to help us in our project. Are they, is the state informing you, Mister Walker, of their projects?
Uh, when they need to close the street?
Yes, sir.
I want to be sure that the lines of communication, they're keeping you informed as well?
Yes, they're calling, every time they get ready to change something. As a matter of fact, they called and said they were going to start this project Monday. Then they called back and said that they had a problem, so they couldn't start it Monday. Then they called back yesterday and said they start first thing this morning.
Okay. Let's also keep the media informed so that they can, if we haven't been, let's be sure the newspaper knows so that the public can be aware that they might need to take alternate routes. People have been asking us, and the discussion arose in our finance committee meeting, and everybody all over the state is talking about what are we going to do as far as cities are concerned, mayors are concerned, about the increase in gas prices and how it impacts our budget and what are we doing to conserve. So my department heads are being aware, they're monitoring. We are exercising control to be sure that we don't drive excessively, that we don't idle vehicles excessively, and that we use good driving patterns and as far as it relates to gas. Energy consumption is extremely important, too. So we'll be having meetings and talking about ways that we can lessen our consumption of energy because we're going to be running air conditioners for some time. This is the earliest that we've had this kind of heat in a long time, I believe. This is an early heat wave. And we're not officially at summer, but we've reached, what, 93 already, and we haven't had a lot of rain. So it's going to be incumbent upon us as public servants and stewards of public facilities and stewards of public money to be as conservative as possible. And we hope that our public will be as careful as they can and protect themselves. Is there any other business to be brought before this mayor and board of all the persons? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mister Gordon does.
I second.
Miss Robinson seconds. Done.